I will call the meeting to order. Jane, would you roll call?
Rudolph?
Here.
Shaven?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Beelenberg?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Lindberg?
Here.
And we've all been given a copy of the agenda. I don't think there's any changes, additions, subtractions. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Lindberg.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
And as standard, you can state your conflict along the way, or if you have one now, but let us know if you have one along the line. Under the consent agenda, these are all approved under one motion. We have the minutes of the January 3rd council meeting, the claims list number 1282 with the amount of $89,495.31. And under that, we all had some of the larger ones. Any questions about any of those? Nope. And the expenditure and revenue reports for the month of December of 2022, the police statistical report for the month of December of 2022, the HMU sewer landfill reconciliation report correction for October 2022, November 2022, and December of 2022. And then last is the salaries that were paid in 2022. And under that, we would instruct the clerk to publish those. Any questions or discussion of any of that? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Kroger.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Then, we're at 3A. Would be approving the plans, specifications, and form of contract for the 2023 street improvement project. I know we talked about that previous time we were at the last meeting, but I guess you probably talked about it at that meeting too. So, you were not at the last meeting, but we have set the public hearing for tonight. So, previous meeting, last meeting in December, we had presented the plans, specifications. Again, this is a small book on the large project, which includes the specs as well as the maps and drawings. Just as a reminder, or as a refresher, this is a larger project than we would normally do with our street maintenance, made possible by a USDA funding mechanism, which is very rare for a street infrastructure project. We were made aware of that in the middle of last summer, wasn't it Jane?
Yes.
When we connected on some other opportunities with USDA. And so, we went through the planning phase, got the award, and we've been working with Snyder and Associates. So, Dave Stern is here, who you've all met before as we've done other work. So, they've worked through the fall to develop these plans and specifications. And one additional comment, just as a overview, a quick visual overview, if I have the right page here. Oops, let's do this one. This page will be better. Bear with me while I zig and zag here. The areas, with all the lettering, D1 through D15, those are the areas that we, Master Engineer, worked with Jeff Spiesito, the street superintendent, to develop plans and specifications around. So, that's what's included. We went out to bid on all that. So, that's the background overview. And I guess at this point, Mayor, this will be your public hearing time to see those other comments or questions from council or those present. Anybody in council have any questions about the process and what we've seen so far? I see Jeff is here. Seth, do you have something that you wanted to?
In regards to 7th and Pine, when it's time for that, I just have a couple of questions.
Okay, is that part of this then Jane? Now'd be the time to ask you those questions.
This, this was information I live at 7th and Pine. My interest in comments are only referring to 7th and Pine. Mr. Gaddis was kind enough to send me the schematic, the drawing of the 7th and Pine part of the project was. I guess for the engineer, I just, was the size of the drain field that flows from the north to the south and turns there on Pine? Was the size of that drain field measured and considered concerning the volume of water that needs to move?
A lot.
Oh, yeah, well, that's my concern. There's no result.
Yeah, we don't specifically have the size calculated. We did that drainage study for the city of Arlen. Gosh, Gene, was that about two years ago now?
Yes, approximately.
And we determined that there was about 70 blocks that come down through the bottom there. So, through that area is probably 50 blocks with no storm drainage anymore. So, there's no storm drainage in the area to even connect on to.
Yeah, well, I understand that's not a possibility. But I certainly want to extend my appreciation of the city for considering this project. I think it's needed. At the same time, I know it's expensive and boy, I sure want it to work. I guess I did not understand the amount of slope. I mean, living there and seeing the water back up onto my property that so much, these numbers, the 12, the 38, how much inches of tip do we have there to turn that water?
Well, we're reconstructing that intersection basically to eliminate all the ponding that's through there and also reconstructing it in concrete because asphalt just is not holding up to the stormwater flows. You know, every couple of years, I think Jeff, you're patching it to fill the ponds.
It stands there and freezes.
That won't hurt anymore, but we are limited by the amount of slope on the side streets that we have to match. So, we're able to probably get 1% through that intersection. That's about all we can get of slope through there. The only way to get more slope would be to reconstruct like the entire downstream block and lower that as you get to that intersection.
So, just right at the intersection, the elevation kind of goes up there as we're trying to move that water down Pine. Can that be dropped a few more inches to give? And then spread the slope?
On which leg of?
I think we're back to the east here you're talking about Seth.
If the water comes from the north and it turns to the east, right as it turns to the east there, I mean, that street drops off a lot to 6th.
Yeah, you just have to go farther down the street to get more elevation.
That would help degrade that down with lower to get more slope. I can't really read how many inches. I'm not an engineer.
So, for instance, at the northeast corner where we're tying in on Pine Street, we have an elevation of 37.06. And at the far north, we're around 38.3. So, there's more than a foot of fall from where we are tying in, about 50 feet north of the intersection to where we were going about 30 feet east of the intersection. There's more than a foot of fall. So, we'll bring through that intersection.
Just across the, you've got two numbers. Refer to those, those, these numbers, yeah, these numbers right here. How much fall would it take?
It doesn't fall that direction. It falls to the south. It doesn't fall across the street on 7th Street. It falls south of the intersection, but the intersection goes across.
Okay, so you're moving the water through the intersection, not crossing the street there?
It crosses. It comes down the south side of, or excuse me, on both gutters of 7th Street flowing south. And then as you approach the intersection, the intersection tips to the east. So, it mostly gets to the intersection before it goes east.
Well, I'll, I have to trust the engineer, but boy, I just know that from experience, the amount of water we need to move.
Yeah, this is, this is not gonna catch any water in storm sewer intakes. This is just to get rid of the ponding and the path probably have at the intersection.
And it's been a problem for years.
Yes, and the only way to get rid of that storm water from flooding into his yard is to bring storm sewer to the area and start collecting it in drain basins prior to this intersection. And that's, I can't even remember Jane, what we had in that. It cost us over $2 million, I think?
We had a budget estimate or low cost estimate of $900,000, $1 million.
And that was to do like every second, third intersection for only half of it.
That was going up to Laurel, starting at Laurel.
Yeah, like I said, it was a couple of years ago. I can't remember the exact. But that is, there's no storm sewer work on this project at the time. I mean, it can always be done in the future and added to this intersection, added farther upstream as well. But yeah, as I said, this will just get rid of the ponding in the intersection.
There's not the 50, there's gonna be water there. I pretty much think it's gonna handle that drain field and move reasonably efficiently, beating around that corner.
It will be better.
Be better.
It will still.
I'll end my questions with that. I do appreciate the effort. I know it can't be perfect.
Unless we're gonna rebuild all of Pine Street going east to get better drainage, it's not, it's still gonna back up in that intersection. But it will drain completely empty now.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so it's not gonna make it any worse. It's gonna make it better. So, that's a good, it's better.
Progress.
It's a start. It's to fix the easiest problem first.
Okay, anyone else? Any other concerns? Thank you for being here to help out. With that, then I would ask for a motion to close the hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Lindberg.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, under Resolution 2520, approving the plans, the specifications, and form of contract for the 2023 street improvement project. Is that just a, thanks Seth. Is this approving what we just talked about, correct Jane? Yes, this would be formally about the plans and specs after this public hearing. And then the next item we'll see is we'll take a look at the bids we opened last week. Any questions, concerns about that? Or does anyone ask for a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Kroger.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Under C, then we would review the construction bids, bid tabulation, and letter recommending award of the 2023 street improvement project.
As Jane mentioned, we took bids last, I believe it was Tuesday here at City Hall for this project. And we had this project set up with a base bid and two alternates because prices really kind of got low last year on the asphalt side of things. So, in our discussions, we decided to make 9th Street alternate 1 and 8th Street alternate 2 in hopes that we could get the base bid at least under your guys' construction budget of $1.4 million and then hope that we could maybe get one, if not both, alternates. So, in taking the bids, as it turns out, we are able to do the base bid as well as alternate 1. Those two combined come in under the $1.4 million estimate. We did take four bids. Old Castle Material, which is known as Omni Engineering, Western Engineering, Grimes Asphalt Paving, and Henningson Construction. And if you guys all have a copy of this bid tab I wrote in front of you.
Yeah, I saw the screen and it was all.
You can see that Omni Engineering out of Omaha was the low bid with a base bid of $1,222,000 plus. And their alternate 1 was $174,000 plus. So, a total of around $1.395 million for this project, just under your $1.4 million budget. So, we have done a lot of work with Omni in the past. We have good experience with them. And in our opinion, they are capable of performing this project. So, we would recommend award to Omni Engineering. Can I answer questions about the project or about the bid process? Anything from the council? Do you have anything I missed that you can think of?
Just to, pleased to get, I think our timing was good.
It was, I was pleasantly surprised.
And having minimum four bidders. The map in your packet as well as what's up on the screen, the areas that are highlighted would be the base bid plus alternate. So, we would be accomplishing everything other than D14 through 15 there, which is 8th Street. Addresses most of our critical needs. And again, between Durant, Baldwin, and Willow, I think that'll be significant impact for some heavily traveled areas for our community. Be some significant improvement there. I also did some independent follow-up and research regarding to our low bidder as they've not done work here in town and spoken with the DOT as well as a handful of peers in southwest Iowa. And no concerns there. For example, they've worked on 30 DOT projects and they are a pre-qualified bidder with DOT work. And spoke with them this afternoon. And they, from there in, they couldn't give me ever, they're not able to provide every evaluator survey that is done. Yet was able to just be at ease that was a reputable contractor. And I would support this as well.
Were all of the bidders at the opening of the bids? Were they present there?
No, I believe Omni actually wasn't there. They just dropped their bid off.
Okay.
But the other three were there.
Grimes, Henningson, and.
Are they a larger company? Or I mean, to be able to come in almost $200,000 under other bidders?
I would say they're very similar to the other three on this list. They just needed the work. You know, I don't know that it's necessary. You know, I think, I think some of these other bidders have to haul their, you know, their asphalt plant's not here anyway.
Okay.
They still have to haul up in Council of West Omaha. It's just their workers have to come from there. So, I don't think that logistically that made a big difference in the bid. I just think maybe they wanted it and need to get their ears started off, so.
Perfect.
And in the past four years, they received our RFPs for our two-inch overlay maintenance. Had received one bid in the past. Our two primary bidders the last few years have been Henningson, Western, and Grimes had put in a bid a year ago as well, so.
And when is this project slated to begin? Do we know that yet?
Late start date is the first part of June. And because of, not because of, but due to the improvements that will also be made with a number of 88 crosswalks, a significant number of 88 crosswalks. So, a lot of concrete work. There's some curb and gutter as well. So, that'll likely be a sub. So, we've got approximately 108 contracts. Doing the actual asphalt overlay probably take a period of a few weeks at most.
Yeah, but their subcontractor or working unit's concrete work will be at all somewhere most likely?
Anything else, questions? I don't think we have any action for that. But then moving on to D, I need a motion for the Resolution 2521, making the award of the contract for the 2023 street improvement project to Omni Engineering.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Beelenberg.
Beat by Zoom.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. As Jane mentioned, this is for USDA, so we get paperwork submitted to them now. And we'll get the contracts off to Omni Engineering to be executed. And we'll get them back to you for your next meeting. And you'll have to approve them one more time, just as a formality. And then it'll be under contract and ready to go.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks Dave.
Out Dave.
Take those, Jane.
I've got my son through there, so.
You can keep one. The same form.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Always welcome staying, hang out for a while.
Appreciate it.
Next, under Other Business, ordinance number 202301, amending chapter 69.8, the code of ordinances for the city of Arlen, Iowa, pertaining to parking zones. The changes include no parking on Exchange Street on the west side, commencing 200 feet south of Victoria Street, continuing 260 feet south. Two is no parking on Tarkington Street on the south side from 12th Street, extending 70 feet to the western driveway entrance for 1,003 Tarkington Street. And this is the second reading of this one for ordinance 202301. Any input from you guys in your offices or from anyone?
Little social media stuff?
Yeah, just social media.
What was that, Richard?
Just some social media comments. Nothing.
Oh, we got it. Okay. Nothing formal. Such as what's the, you know, what's the need for U-turn sign? And there's that type of stuff?
Just the parking.
Just as a refresher, it's the first time we're looking at the maps. These were what was presented last time. This is on the west, east side of the substation on Exchange. And then this was the area 12th and Tarkington, that red line here to improve access and visibility off of a heavily traveled street, 12th Street. And again, this would be a change during no parking ordinance, which is applied before you. And my office, or I've not had any other feedback or comments since the first reading. I don't know if you've had any formal comments or questions to your record?
It just, if, if we don't put that sign there, they park on there and then you have somebody coming down Tarkington 212, and they're trying to get around that corner. And the flow of traffic going up 12th Street north, they get going pretty good. And it's, there will be an accident if we don't go ahead and put that sign.
In addition, additional item we'll comment on with the semi or tractor trailer parking, which has been the prevalent presence on the east side of the substation, which again, doing this for safety and access to that substation. There are some other options in addition. One of those specifically being spoke with Nelson Farm Supply. And Nelson Farm Supply does have parking for tractor trailers out of their property, which is just east of town. Spoke with Todd Barant last week. And they do have a fee that they charge for that. But there are other options in addition, as we talked about, to the south of where the no parking will be with some improved configuration, some of those long haulers with trailers could better utilize that space. So, I know it's a challenge for folks, but using this space is something we want to mitigate. So, we need a motion then for the second reading?
I have a question.
Okay.
About the Exchange Street. East of Myrtle, my dad owns a shop down there. So, we've owned that shop for about six, maybe seven years. And we parked down there personally ourselves with loaded trailers. And I know a bunch of guys like the Hillgardeners, they park down there so that way they can put their trucks in for the winter time. And they like to keep it down there because then their shop's right there so they could keep an eye on the trailers and those. So, if we have to move our trailers out to Nelson Farm Supply and pay a fee for that, then why do we need to pay commercial taxes for down there since we've been parking down there for how many years? So, we already got paid extra for taxes to use that even though we've been down there for how many years? And now you guys want us to move? And I know there's plenty of access because I live right up the street from there. There's access on the south and north side of the.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think taxes has anything to do with the right to park. It's more the safety of our substation being blocked. People can't see it nor can they access it if there's an emergency. But south of this red line, there's room if people back in for, what do we say, four semis? If they park?
As far as potentially reconfiguring, yeah. Which again, is public space.
Back in and park? Like they can park on the south side of that red line, just not in front of the power station. Because if there's an emergency, we can't get to the power. We don't know who owns the semis or if they're not home. How are we gonna fix that? That's, that's the main thing.
Okay, another comment is during the spring and through the fall time, there are weeds and like grass and stuff that grow up in there. It gets taller than me and I'm six foot. And we have to call the city and then they finally come and take care of it about a week later. So, if it's so high priority to keep it safe and everything, then why are those weeds growing so high near electrical stations?
Around the substation or in the future parking?
Like inside the fence.
Oh, inside the fence.
Yeah, yeah, there is on that west slope. And we looked at that this summer. Plans are to get in there and try to knock that all down and spray it. And we're probably gonna have to cover it with some vegetation, you know, fabric. And then put rock probably over top of that fabric, just like the rest of the substation is, just to keep the vegetation, vegetation down. But we are aware of that, that that needs to be taken care of and maintained.
Does that help answer some questions for you?
Yeah.
I think they said that there's parking on the other side of the street too. Is that correct?
There can't be because there's a slope.
Is there?
If we parked on the other side, we'd be in the middle of the road.
And evidently, there's that one trailer's been down there a while. Jeff, next.
Yeah, Hillgarden, a dolly down.
The drive-in. They usually move it once in a while though.
That's taking access away from the other truck drivers that wanna pull it apart and leave again. To me, it shouldn't be a dolly down area. You have to be hooked up.
Hooked up, even those four spots that we're talking about that would be.
So, we have to be hooked up. How are we supposed to put in our trucks so that way they don't gel up and freeze on us when it's negative temperatures?
Put them in where?
Inside our shops. Cause there's no shop down there that's long enough for a truckload trailer.
You're just talking about the tractor.
Yeah.
You have power the outside?
The amount of negative, it's, they're gonna gel up and they won't work for probably a week or two until it wants back up.
I think you're just mainly talking about extended time.
I mean, that's, that's the only trailer that's been down there for extended time. But most of them are only sitting there dolly down for maybe two, three days at most.
I get your point there, yeah. So, if you've got a heavier tractor running.
And then most of those shops down there have cameras that are mostly pointed at the shops and also at those trailers. So, they're always secure. So, we always feel like if, how you guys said, we can move out to Nelson Farm Supply, how are we supposed to know if they're secure enough?
The Nelson Farm Supply is just an option?
They're just trying to provide.
Yeah.
And there may be others in town that have private property or private areas. That's just one that we've been made aware of that was brought forth. So, people that have been using some of this space didn't feel like there weren't any options.
Unfortunately, we don't have a good, we don't have semi parking in town like other, other communities offer. We don't have space for that. The church moved because a lot of people, they used to allow them to park there at ShopCo. So, then everybody moved to the park and started doing damage at the park with their heavy rigs. So, we had to say that they can't park at the parks. Now, we're having problems in front of the substation. And unfortunately, we don't have land. That's good. I mean, I would like to offer some nice semi parking, but we don't have availability of an area to make it realistic.
So, again, about the substation, like everybody that parks down there, like I know they parked, have been parked there for five plus years. I haven't seen anybody new down there. So, how come all of a sudden it's been a problem now when they've been over there, down there for more than five years?
It's been, it's been an issue, something we're trying to, we were trying to. It's been, it's been an issue somewhere trying to, we were trying to, well, I'm new to my position, but HMU's been trying to get that changed properly for five years ago. There's been suggestions throughout. And if I remember right, I think, I'd heard correctly, there was no parking signs down there at one point.
On the heat.
Yeah.
On your fences.
Correct. You know, try to stop parking and it just wasn't ever here to or enforced at that point. We've been trying to, HMU's been trying to enact a no parking law on there for some time.
So it's only in front of the substation?
Correct.
It's not to the south?
Yeah, as long as we got access into that south gate and then there's visibility along the east fence. That's what we're looking for. So if that line stops right there where that south fence is, correct, Gene?
Just at the, where the gravel area allows you to access that gate.
Yep.
Yeah, from that point all the way south could still be utilized as it has been. Essentially along the east side of the fence and then also just to the end of the gravel driveway area. And there's been recent, if I'm not mistaken, also heightened concern with what's gone on with some other.
Just recently, yeah.
Across the nation.
Vandalism in substations that were taken down.
And would like to say never, never, never here, but again, every team never here. So that was what was discussed at the streets meeting and we have some staff there to support
Okay, well, then I would ask, is there a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance 2023-01?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Lindberg.
Roll call Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for the input though.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate your time.
So I think this has been through Subcommittee and this is the second reading now, so.
And I would recommend you take it to a third and final reading before any final adoption.
So we have a couple of weeks.
If there's other ideas or input or.
Item B is regarding amended and restated ambulance commission joint agreement. Have you gone to any chance to look that over? Talked about it a little bit.
Also in your packet, this, this all ties to the continued, continued changing landscape of EMS and ambulance service across the nation, across the state of Iowa. And Shelby County is experiencing some of the same challenges in terms of a strong labor market or available labor market as well as a strong volunteer network. So some of those items combined, it more or less created a perfect storm. And so with the ambulance EMS service on the private side, knowing that by 2026, our current private provider, Medevac, is going to shut down the business. Nine, 10 months ago, there's been an ad hoc group meeting. And you'll see on the next item on the agenda, which relates to the formal establishment of the Advisory Council. In parallel with that has been the existing ambulance commission. And the ambulance commission has, since 2006, and I have a short five or six slides and I'm sharing with you, have been in operations with the city and the hospital that has supported or helped support the private service. That's what this amended and restated agreement is. I'm gonna do my best, RJ, to, well, if you got your packet.
I have it in front of me, Gene. I have it pulled up.
Couple of highlights. The purpose, purpose of this, the amended and restated is to act, is to serve as a bridge to a new model. And again, that intended new model is a countywide service. Restating here that again, the landscape was changed significantly, recruiting, retaining EMS, as well as the costs to be a public or private to variable services. As indicated, Medevac is, they had known that after this current five-year contract with them, they have no intention to renew. And then this highlights the stakeholder group that has been meeting. The intent is to, again, establish a countywide ambulance service. It will still be critical and vital to have a strong volunteer, volunteer network. Yet we know that's a tough road to hoe here in the near term. By November of this coming year, or this current year, I should say, is what's intended to be on the ballot for deeming EMS an essential service. Police and fire are an essential service per state code. Ambulance does not. So as a reminder once again, if you dial 911, most of us expect that someone not only is gonna answer that, but also they will send an ambulance and qualified technician to support you. This would allow us as a county to deem this essential. At the last election, there were eight counties across the state that also had it on the ballot and five of those eight did pass that. That's what we're team up to do come this November. And if that was successful, the expectation is that by July of '25 is when that new service can start up if all the timeline was met. Little background again on the current agreement. So since 2006, the board has been comprised of two city representatives, two, these are the voting members on the ambulance commission, two hospital representatives and also the trauma, trauma services medical director. And the funding for the past 15, 16 years has been one-third of City Harlan and two-thirds hospital. Prior to them, the county was a participant in this agreement and they dropped out back in 2006. So this amended and restated is to have the county rejoin this through this bridge period. So going forward, what this amended and restated agreement, which was in your packet, would comprise of a seven-member board, the additions being two county representatives during this bridge period. And the funding, and I'll get to this in just a moment, from this point for the next few years would be 55% hospital, 27% city, 18% county. And we have budgeted that as I, we went through the budget process and been speaking to this, sharing this with you since probably early last fall, that we would expect our cost to go up even with the county joining due to the cost to recruit and retain the personnel.
Gene, how was that number determined?
What's that?
How was that number determined percentage wise?
So here's a great segue.
Oh, neat.
So the logic of being, the past few years, it's been two-thirds hospital, one-third Harlan, so that's a 112, two and a 56, one. And so with, from this point, for the next few years, it's going to be the, let me go back here, one-third city, two-thirds hospital, one-third county. Of that additional 168,000, not of the previous. So, but those percentages come up to this 56, 27 and 18.
Okay.
And the 27% is what we have in, in this year's budget.
That's not an additional 27%.
No.
Okay.
You know, our percentage before was 33%. It's actually dropped down to 27%. But again, since the cost have gone up, so which this was the last page that summarizes that. So it's the far right column. So the new, with the additional 168,000, so that total is 55% hospital, 27% city and 18% county, which is that final far right column. And so for example, the county prior to, the county board of supervisors just reviewed this this morning and acted on at the board meeting. This is in front of you this evening and the hospital board of trustees will act on this in the next two weeks with the same information. The ambulance commission, which Mayor Christiansen and I sit on as voting members representing the city, he was front of that governing board in Jan, excuse me, back in December and recommended this and pending approval from each governing body. So go back to the county for example. So prior to, prior to this next July, the county wasn't contributing anything, yet they'll be contributing 68,000 to help bridge this through the transition to a new service. So that's some background. I'd happy to address any questions. And again, Mayor Jay, any comments you'd have from working with the ambulance commission? Or any questions from the group?
No, it's been a process that I think we're just, early in the process still, but some, some things have to be decided to help keeping this project moving forward because it's not going away. Like saying, it's not just Shelby County that's dealing with this. There are statewide with lots of, lots of things going on in the state. And this is just one of the major ones that's, and it has to be on top of people, you know? We have the people, the current situation would stay in place where it is, but there's not the people. And that's not just the people that are paid, that is the volunteers in our county. And that's a big part of this is we just don't have those outlying counties that are outlying cities that have volunteers. And the ones they have, I saw, the average age is 55, 56 years old. And most of those people that still have jobs and they still have to show up and that's just, that means you have to man a squad to show up. That's, so it's hard. And I'd say this is a critical item that we're gonna have to address in the next year and a half, two years. So I just appreciate all the work that's been done, people behind the scenes, because these are all, there's people volunteering, you know, to help what they're doing in this. They've done a great job so far, so.
I do have one question to ask, Gene and Mayor, where would they, where would that operate out of then? I mean, where would we be the?
Still to be determined, but most likely where the current private service is.
Oh, sure.
And you know, we've got two folks here from, to live and breathe this stuff daily with EMA and EMS, so with Jordan Sanders and Alex Londo. That's not cast in stone.
Right.
That'd be an unlikely realization.
Alex, not to put you on the spot right now, or Jordan, do you know on average about how many number of EMTs that we have in the county, throughout the county and cities?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one EMTs.
These are paramedics supposed to volunteer and paid through that by means of.
Mayor Jay said the average age is about 50, 51.
Yep. So their response time is getting less and less.
And we're, you know, there are, there are communities out there who do have an ambulance that are talking about not having an ambulance in the near future because they just don't have volunteers to staff it. So the state puts more and more restrictions or not, I don't want to say restrictions, requirements on an ambulance and what you have to do, what you have to follow. And for volunteer departments, sometimes that's not worth it and it hinders what they can do. So that's out, that's the way those positives and negatives.
What's the cost to put somebody through the EMT program?
Thousand.
Yeah, 1,200.
There you go.
And that's at what, like a hundred and some odd hour commitment?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty?
About a semester of school.
That's a lot if you think to us.
Big field departments and.
Twice a week for four hours.
Yeah.
It's a typical setup.
Fortunately, we have resources out there to help pay for that stuff, but still have to get somebody to volunteer that much time.
Yeah.
Class and then volunteer to go on calls. Your average run, if you're not in Harlan, if you're in Erling or somewhere else, your average run between the run itself and paperwork is about two hours.
Please.
One more.
It's crazy. Can you imagine, paramedic?
Yeah.
Hard pass.
Yeah.
So is there a motion to regarding the amended and restated ambulance commission joint agreement?
I'll motion.
Thank you.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven. Sorry, Beelenberg.
Roll call Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then moving on to C is consider Roger Beeson as the designate for the EMS system Is that just to fill more of those spots, Gene?
Yes, so what the county had adopted at the board of supervisors meeting was this resolution, which again, this is one of many required steps. You know, Marcus, Marcus Gross, county attorney, I know Alex provided a lot of information, but there, there is a very prescriptive guideline and timeline. And they started with the November election and backtrack from there. But according to state code 422D, if I have that correct, that there are many steps that you, required steps that you have to do. One of them is to formally establish an advisory council. And that's what this resolution has done with the county board of supervisors. And it specifies in here what the recommended makeup is under item three, this was in your packet. And it's a seven-member board to act as an advisory board to the board of supervisors. And there are three or four of these that are ongoing or permanent. So for example, the hospital administrator, city administrator, and each of those has or designated. It doesn't mean that of the 18, 20 or more personnel that have been performing, working together through this ad hoc committee, that they will still continue to provide support and input. Yet in terms of formally advising the board of supervisors, it would be this second member council. I would recommend, which I have in the packet, to have Roger serve on this through this, I think, very critical time with his 20-plus years in emergency response and knowing all the volunteer squads to sit on that board is the designate in my, in my place for this advisory council. So that's what this does.
Do I need to abstain?
What personal gain do you have?
I don't think so. I think I should.
Personal benefit.
Yeah, it'd only be personal if the city took over because I'd get more paper call
most likely, but since it's county, it wouldn't.
Any questions for Gene or discussion about that? I would ask for a motion to appoint Roger to that position.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Too slow.
Motion by Peterson. I'm gonna give Beelenberg the time delay.
Get faster internet. That was, I was just, I don't even know what we used.
Roll call Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
And I would just like probably just to say to those two guys sitting there in the back row, I've been involved in some other meetings with them. They are very involved with what's going on, you know, pre this, during this, and I know there will be post this. They are, they talk to the volunteers, they talk to the other cities, they, they know exactly what's happening, you know? That's why he knows the exact age of the person, average age in the county. And they know if there's an ambulance, they know if they've got a bed, they know what their equipment is. And I, you guys, to be commended for what you're doing and I don't know how you have time to rest, but I appreciate you putting your time and a lot of it's volunteer stuff too you're doing, so thank you. All right, I would move on to Mr. Geddes, city administrative report.
Fairly brief this evening, brief for me anyway. Reminder of the story facade applications for those interested property owners downtown that need to be in by the end of the month. This Friday, we have a streets committee meeting here at noon, so that involves a few of you, Richard, Kyle and Gina. Again, it is a public meeting, so anyone, just continue to look at other projects or requests on the street items. There is a, some white stuff coming out of the skies sometime tomorrow. So starting tomorrow at noon through 5:00 PM Thursday, we did put out through social media and our other partners today voluntary, voluntary off-street parking, which again has yielded and netted wonderful results. Really appreciate the public's cooperation with that. Tremendously helps the, our public safety crews, excuse me, public work crews getting the streets cleared timely. And we'll wait and see by 6:00 Thursday morning how many inches of snow we get.
School has canceled already.
I would ask.
I just got a text.
For, for Thursday?
For tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Our pot county has put in their snow emergency with no parking on the street.
I just got a.
So just to throw that out there.
I just texted my sister.
There's someone for, I mean, it's a typical, do we really know? It's anywhere from.
One inch to three feet.
It's an opportunity for us to find.
Earlier today, we were on that somewhat of a border line and we were in a high percentage to, look at all of us trying to be.
Yeah.
We were a high probability of two inches plus.
Still get a paycheck.
And would also, if we decide, determine that by Thursday, if we need to declare a snow emergency, we would likely do that through the day Thursday and Friday to allow us to get everything curbed. And again, the snow emergency is from eight to noon on north-south streets and one to five on east-west streets. And also to efficiently move these windrows around downtown. Stay posted.
Stay posted if we end up increasing that to a snow emergency, and we'll use all of our great media partners and social media to help get that out. If there, with the legislation, legislators starting up at the state level, I know many admins and city clerks and finance directors across the state are already quickly monitoring the first house file introduced, House File 1, property tax reform. And so if you're getting, get those legislative updates from the league, I know the league will be closely monitoring that. Not only the The two hot topics we are aware of are obviously the school voucher topic, as well as property tax reform. And so we'll be talking later with a budget work session, that, you know, property tax reform of 2013, it resulted in backfill and rollbacks, and that backfill was supposed to remain in place, while that backfill we know is going away by 2026. The 2022 legislation with the business property tax credit, being told that that would be fully funded until 2029. It's just, to continue to provide the level of service that any community, rural or metro, expects, I believe, which you as a council elected officials want to deliver, it, I don't see that in the, you know, in the very near future, but it really concerns me for the mid to long term as far as being able to provide that level of service with, I think, what I sense is just continued to be restricted as to ways to generate revenue, continuing, one of those being the property tax reform. So I continue to follow that over the coming weeks and months. And then next meeting, I will be joining via Zoom, so I won't be in person, but will be joining remotely. And with that, I'll close my comments this evening. Any questions or updates from me?
Thanks, Gene.
Seeing and hearing none. Thanks, Gene. Under my report, I have an appointment to fill a vacancy for the HMU utilities board, and this one, this appointment would go through November of 2025, filling Randy Reese's spot. He's moving out of the area as of, I missed this month.
I think he's gone, Ray.
He's gone.
Yep. Things move quicker in
And I'm going to, the name I'm brought out is Doug Hammer, is what I'm going to recommend to the council to fill his spot. Visited with a few folks, different people that I had in my mind as far as filling that seat. This is just one of, we're going to have to fill another one next year, and another one after the year after that. So this is kind of a, we've got lots of change happening down there. The guy in charge down there seems to be doing a pretty darn good job right now, so it's a, I just think it's a key position. Big learning curve, it's a six-year, I reappointed, and you guys recommended Michelle Erickson, she'd been on, she was filling a seat from before, it's only two years. Two years isn't enough to kind of learn, I couldn't do it, I don't, anyone can do what they're doing down there. Doug does have a little experience in this area, and basically that's what it kind of came down to, is just based on what I thought the need was right now. So I would recommend Doug Hammer to fill that seat of Randy Reese.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Kroger.
Roll call Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, Todd Belline, Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry Board.
Good evening, Senator One. Speaking of property tax reform, or school vouchers, or any other subject you want to discuss, Saturday at 10:00 a.m. is our first legislative talk. So we're going to have that one out at the atrium of the chamber. Come on out, we'll have both Steve and Jason there with us, and they'll give us their input on what they're, you know, starting this new session focused on, working on, and of course, we'll open the floor to the public for questions after that. And then later on in the day, if you want to talk to one of your federal representatives, Senator Joni Ernst will be at the high school gymnasium Saturday afternoon at 3:30 for a town hall. So two opportunities to talk with your representatives on Saturday. Just a reminder, our awards banquet's coming up, screaming up on February 17th. This year will be held at the Harlan Dolphin Country Club. We do have both Volunteer of the Year nomination forms out there for the public to be able to nominate Citizen Volunteer of the Year candidates. We would ask that those be turned in by Friday. And then amongst the membership, they're currently voting for the New Business of the Year, the Nonprofit of the Year, and the Business of the Year, and we hope to have them complete those ballots by the 20th, too, and then, of course, we'll give everything out at that awards banquet. So other than that, we're just planning an awards banquet, there's a lot to, so we have a lot going on.
What day was that one?
It's the 17th, February 17th, it's a Friday.
Okay.
All right. Any questions for me? All right, thanks.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
HMU, Joe Ruschemberg.
All right, thank you. Just several items here, some of these are kind of just reminders or touching on a few things we talked about last week. We do have publications out, or notices out for hiring a staff accountant and a cashier. We talked about it a little bit previously. Both positions are posted for 25 hours a week, and applications will be taken until Friday, 20. So we'll see where we end up there for some applicants, and then we'll kind of go through the interview process and work our way through that. Good news, and I had mentioned this to Gene and Jane previously in the email, but I just wanted to let the rest of the council know, HMU did receive a $500,000 grant from the wastewater and drinking water treatment financial assistance program. This is actually through the Iowa Finance Authority. So this then will be spent towards our, you know, new water well, water project. You know, we were looking at that six and a half, well, seven to seven and a half million, so at least that'll take half a million off the top there to start with, which will greatly help, so we're really excited about that. Also, on our water treatment plant litigation, I think I kind of, different times I mentioned, you know, that we were working through that, trying to get a settlement. We did actually receive the first payment from one of the defendants on that for $550,000, and we are expecting or waiting on a second settlement payment from a second defendant on that litigation. So we'll wait, and then like I said, I can announce what that other amount is at that time, too. On the water project itself, we do have all the abstracts updated, and Matt Hudson's got all the title opinions completed on that. So we should be sitting good there as far as USDA requirements on those title, requiring those title opinions. And on that same note, we are visited with the McClure Engineering as far as the schedule on that water project. We're still potentially looking at approving plans end of January, and then setting a bid date for end of February. So we're still on that same schedule, so keep track of that one. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Any comments in the council?
And kids got a great opportunity to help your neighbor potentially tomorrow.
You talking about grabbing a shovel?
If they're going to watch recording in the morning.
Gene, the weatherman's right, then we'll all be out there scooping.
School canceled, so we probably won't catch any flurry. It's obvious.
Any comments from the public? Okay, thanks, everybody. Meeting adjourned.